I'm back. We are now on the consideration of the daily file. So only one thing that's in third reading file right now. That's Bill number forty-four dash thirty-eight C O R. Clerk, please read the title.
Bill number forty-four dash thirty-eight C O R, as substituted on the floor and amended in the committee of the whole. Introduced by Committee on Rules by request of Imaga Hoga and Guahan, the governor of Guam in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam. An act making appropriations for the operations of the executive, legislative and judicial branches of the government of Guam for fiscal year ending September thirty, twenty twenty-six, making other appropriations and establishing miscellaneous and administrative provisions.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, nay. Speaker Blas. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, yea. Senator Guma Tautau. Senator Guma Tautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, nay. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, nay. Senator Salis Matanani. Senator Salis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, yea. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Turlahi. Senator Turlahi, nay.
Bill number forty-four dash thirty-eight C O R received eleven yays, four nays. Bill number forty-four dash thirty-eight C O R is duly passed by the body. The floor is now open to brief extension of remarks. Senator Borja, you are recognized.
Mr. Speaker, colleagues and the people of Guam watching at home. Mr. Speaker, you know, the last ten days I've learned a lot. And so today, I'm gonna try something I've seen some of my colleagues do. Hey, you. Yes, you, you at home. In the office, stop what you're doing and listen because I need your full attention for just a few minutes. Don't worry. I'm not about to sell you bar fundraising tickets and I'm not auditioning for tomorrow theater series. But what I'm going to do is explain why this process played out the way it did. Why some decisions happened the way they did and why it's important that you understand it. Because if you only catch the soundbites or the headlines, you'll miss the real story. And the real story is this. Every decision made in this budget had a reason, a consequence and a purpose. Now let me preface this by saying, some of my colleagues will probably attack me and my other colleagues who voted for this bill for what we've done today, and that's fine. Because that's part of the process. But here's the reality. In their speeches, they'll leave out the good that's in this budget. They'll focus on what they disagree with. The truth is, each one of us has just one equal vote, just like me, just like them. And the people of Guam need to know, we don't make progress by standing here and complaining about everything that's wrong because that's what you're going to hear. We make progress by recognizing what we can do, by taking steps forward and by improving what we can. That's how governing works. That's how we serve the people of Guam. Today was not about politics, it's about choices, tough ones that directly affect your family, your paycheck and the services you rely on every day. Let me say this upfront. There are many things in this budget that I don't agree with. But governing is not about throwing my hands up and saying, no, because I didn't get everything I wanted. We don't move forward by disagreeing with everything. We move forward by working with what's in front of us, making it better and putting the people's needs first. Let's look at the facts. For over twenty years, the other side has held the majority in this legislature. That means for nearly two decades, they've had control of this budget process. And yet today, even while we were passing a budget very similar to the ones they pass year after year, they stand here and they're gonna stand here and blame everyone else. If you look at the numbers, Mr. Speaker, and I'm not gonna go into those details, it's almost three hundred and fifty million, a three hundred and fifty million in increase in just over four years. And here's the difference. Today, we're passing a similar budget while also reducing the B P T. And that's something we committed to during the campaign and that's something we delivered. Tell me that's not good fiscal management. Now, some will say, but people, the people are gonna suffer and agencies will suffer. We're compromising education, we're compromising healthcare and we're compromising public safety. But let's be real. These are the, uh, these are some of the same agencies that still have money left over from previous fiscal years that they can't even spend. And that's not even including the federal dollars that we give back year after year because we failed to use them. Mr. Speaker, that's not a revenue problem, that's a management problem. Mr. Speaker, I also want to address why I didn't support some of the proposals that were pushed during this budget session. Some of the funding sources that were, right now, that we were trying to use, were underperforming by fifty percent compared to what was projected for the fiscal year. To base promises on the kind of unstable revenue is not just irresponsible. It's giving our people false hope and it does a disservice to the very people who rely on these funds. And let me be clear, the other side is not wrong. We have problems in government, we have problems in healthcare, we have problems in education, we have problems in public safety. But the problem is not funding. We keep using these moments to convince people that if we just give the government more mummy, mummy? Money? More mummy? More money? That our problems will magically go away. I believe every worker should be compensated fairly. But you, on one side, we're saying that we're gonna run out of money, but at the same time, we're handing out raises. Mr. Speaker, the math just doesn't add up. For our veterans, I will continue to advocate for you in Washington, D.C. For our mayors, we'll continue to press the executive branch to do its job and fulfill the mandates our mayors too often have to pick up slack for. For our education system, I will continue to hold G D O E accountable to spend and maximize the dollars they already have but failed to use. That is real leadership, that is real progress. My time is running out. So every dollar we appropriate must be a dollar that serves you, the families, the students, the workers, the veterans, the poor, and yes, the taxpayers who make government possible. That is why I supported this bill and that is why I'll continue to fight for accountability, responsibility and fairness in every decision we make. Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker and the people of Guam, Sizouz Maussi, and thank you for trusting us with this responsibility. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
You're welcome. On brief extension of my ranking member, Senator Tina Rose Muybarn, ma'am, you're recognized.
Manana Sizouz, uh, Mr. Speaker and to my colleagues and to the people of Guam listening. I rise today, Mr. Speaker, with mixed feelings, but with resolve that ultimately passing this budget was the right thing to do. This bill is far from perfect, I'll admit it. Was there a better way to reduce the tax burden on our local businesses? I think so. That is why I supported an alternative by my good friend and fellow Academy alumina from Baragada proposed. And I tried my best to get it included in this budget. Can I blame any civil servants who is worried that cutting eighty million dollars in twenty twenty-seven will make them lose their job? Of course not. That is why I supported the effort made by the senator from Timuning to preserve the current B P T rate for businesses that aren't affected by it. Do I want more funding to go to public schools and the hospital? You better believe I do. But, but promising our students and patients money that may not be real is irresponsible. Despite the concerns though, it would be wrong to say this budget is all bad. After all, as the saying goes, Mr. Speaker, there are two sides to a coin. And this one hundred and eighty-eight or one hundred and eighty-nine page legislation that we spent sleepless nights debating does a lot of good too. It advances our commitment to rebuild Simon Sanchez and make our only prison safe again. It allows a lot of agencies to keep the money they saved this fiscal year. It pushes our effort to capture lost revenue from imports forward to grow our economy without raising taxes. It prevents red tape from closing our cultural repository. It protects our public television station, which is being attacked by the MAGA movement in Washington. It supports our foster children, our local manufacturers and our emerging green economy. And, Mr. Speaker, it will help our depressed tourism industry to be healthy again and help save the jobs of our friends and family who work in the hotels, restaurants and retail stores. But while I have conflicting feelings about this budget, there are some things that are very clear. It's clear we benefited greatly from the bipartisan spirit shown in this session. And without question, we were better informed because of the hard work of O F B, the governor's fiscal team, our central operations staff and the teamwork from our senatorial staff who helped more than just their own boss behind the scenes. Mr. Speaker, I also think it is clear and nobody, that nobody got a hundred percent of what they wanted in this bill. And I don't think any of us would say we are a hundred percent happy with the final product. But for me, that is a sign of a successful negotiation among the fifteen of us in this body. Because as we know, the legislature runs on consensus. A lot of time that means meeting halfway to get us to the common ground. And yes, sometimes getting a majority to agree means we have to compromise to not get our way cover to cover. That can be a hard pill, a pill to swallow. But if this job was easy, it, if it was all fun and games, we would have a lot more people signing up to serve in these halls. I tell you one thing though, Mr. Speaker. Fulfilling our organic act duty to pass a budget, even if I feel uneasy about the end product, the right thing to do was clear for me. And voting to prevent a government shutdown, if it comes to that, will be one of those rare easy decisions I'll have to make. Undankulina Sizouz Maussi for giving me the time to share my perspective on how I felt the consensus of this budget helped bring me to my decision today. Sizouz and bini DC, uh, Mr. Speaker. Todo gaigigi, sanhalami i leslatura zen i todudu itautau guahan. Sizouz and bini DC.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Senator from Timuning, Senator Duennius, sir, you're recognized. Brief extension of remarks.
Sizouz Maussi, Mr. Chair. My dear colleagues. We began these budget discussions, we set out with one guiding principle. To strike the right balance between fiscal responsibility and reinvestment in our island's future. I can confidently say we have achieved that. This budget is not just a collection This budget is not just a collection of numbers, it's a statement of values. And through collaboration and compromise, we have delivered a plan that reflects priorities for our people. Let me be clear, the wins in this budget are not Republican wins. They are not Democrat wins, they are wins for Guam. In fact, just this week, we saw press releases touting victories secured by good Democratic colleagues, one from Pago Bay, another from Jigo. And you know what? That's exactly how it should be, Mr. Speaker. That's what this process is all about. Yes, the process can be messy, yes, at times it can even be ugly. But just like making sausage, you don't judge the process by the grind, you judge it by the final product. And colleagues, I believe the product we have before us is strong, thoughtful, and worthy of our people's support. Let's look at what we accomplished together. We committed to tax relief for our businesses and we delivered. Not only did we lower the BPT to half percent, but we took it a step further and looked to lower the other half percent in the coming fiscal year, additional fiscal year. We revived our economy by giving tourism the strategic boost it needs, investing in airline incentives to bring back 1 million visitors and jobs to Guam with them. We invested in our people, a Guam Memorial Hospital receives additional funding to improve services and meets longstanding needs. Our mayors, the frontline of government in every village, and after increasing better services for their, for their constituents and our constituents, Mr. Chair. We upheld fiscal responsibility by ensuring, ensuring our rainy day fund remains whole. And we finally fulfilled our promise to Simon Sanchez High School, ensuring that students and families in Jigo will no longer be left waiting for the school that they deserve. We listened to our educators, our parents, and our youth by dedicating funding for sports facilities in our schools, because education is not just about books and classrooms, it's about the whole student body and mind. We strengthened public safety by fully funding law enforcement recruitment cycles for GFD, GPD, DOC, CQA, and we gave customs the resources they need to modernize and finally close the leakages on taxes. Colleagues, that's not just one senator's vision. This is not one party's platform. This is a collective result of working together. That is compromise, and compromise in the true sense. We didn't say it's my way or the highway, we said, "Let's find a way," and we did. That's why we call this the big beautiful compromise. It lowers taxes, it funds our hospitals, it, our schools, our mayors, and our safety. It invests in our economy, our children, and our future. It honors our obligations while still preparing for tomorrow. And above all, it proves that we can accomplish what we can accomplish when we put people above politics. Colleagues, no budget will ever satisfy everyone, and that's been said by my retiring, my colleagues' retiring speakers. Some will wish we had cut more, others will wish we had spent more, but this budget offers a balance. It provides relief, it secures investments, and it gives us a roadmap forward. This kind of work, our people, this is the kind of work our people expect from us. This is the kind of work that makes me proud to serve alongside each and every one of you. And so, with conviction, I urge you to support the swift passage of this measure in the third reading, and we have. Let's deliver for the priorities of our people. I want to take this time and a moment to express my deepest gratitude, first to Mr. Steve Guerrero, the director of OFB, and his team, Ms. Vanessa, Arya, Mika, and Kami, for the countless hours they put into making this budget possible. To the staff members of every senator who worked late nights and long days negotiating, debating, finding compromise, even amongst themselves. To all stakeholders who came before us to advocate for what they care about, your voices, we heard it here, this legislature listened. And most importantly, to our central staff led by First Lady Joanne Comacho, our clerks and our team under the leadership of Ms. Renee Menno, and our protocol team led by Sergeant in Arms, Mr. Ed Bukaiwi. Your work is the backbone of this institution. Now, colleagues, after all this effort and sacrifice, it's time to send a clear message to our friends at Adaloo. This budget is balanced, responsible, and people-centered. It deserves to be signed into law without delay. Our people cannot wait any longer for certainty. They need to see, after all the hearings, late nights, and compromises, their legislature stood together and delivered. And we call on the governor to do the same. Sidhuus Maasi, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Brief extension of remarks. Any other senator wanting? Gentlemen from Momotl, to my de-senator Parkinson, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Hafadei to my people of Guam. Welcome to the end of our budget process. I hope it's been enlightening to show what it's like when these senators try to bring MAGA priorities to this chamber. We've seen quite a few things that have shocked me. Senators with oversight selling their office to agencies they have oversight on. Financial benefits towards the top 1%. Passing new sweeping powers to our political cronies in the dead of night, at midnight, where no people can see. We talk about the statement of values and the priorities of this chamber. One of my good colleagues mentioned the very first priority. Things he mentioned was reducing taxes for the very wealthy, the top 1%. Half a percent now, half a percent later. And it's only going to cost the people of Guam $120 million in lost services to the people who need it most. And how did they do that? With a demonization of our own local civil servants. "Oh, look how useless the government is and all the people that work in there. We need to cut, 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 cut." "Oh, we don't like any of these DEI programs, so let's cut, cut, cut on our own cultural Does anyone believe that we are going to be able to solve more problems in the coming years with less money? I don't. This government has been under long-time austerity measures, and this has led to situations where basic wage adjustments are so far behind that when we do make the adjustments, they end up becoming massive obligations, because we delay it for so long. And the worst part is, the high cost of living has sold out our youth. And I'm not talking about DOE, I'm talking about young people. There is this meme in our society how Gen Z looks older than millennials, as millennials are just aging incredibly. And I thought that was a fun joke, but what I recognized is that these people, these young individuals, are working two, three, four jobs, and it is putting the age in their face. I lived in a much easier time to be a young person. I could work a part-time job, have an apartment over my head, and still party every weekend. Young people nowadays are living on debt, consumer debt. And they are not going to have the services to care for them. We are not, we are going to be losing Medicaid funding throughout the country as this desire to give to the top 1% roots its way throughout the country. But there's a difference, my colleagues in this chamber, between us and the federal government. When they cut revenues for the top 1%, they just get to print money. They can print unlimited amounts of money, and if the national budget is anything to show, just keep going with deficit spending. But we can't do that here. In the local government, we actually have to fund our priorities. And adopting this MAGA, "Let's give it all to the 1%, loot the government while the going is good," it does not serve the people. And what are we doing? We talk about a big game about rightsizing government, but no meaningful cuts have been made, no courage in the pocket, just passing the buck to the governor and saying, "You make the cuts," because we are too scared to do our job. So rather than prioritizing healthcare or the schools, we will prioritize the benefit of the top 1%. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, sir. Brief extension of remarks. Any other senator willing to give a brief extension of remarks? Going twice. Gentlemen from Yipans, sir, you're recognized. Senator Barnett.
Sidhuus Maasi, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to address the people of Guam this morning on this not-so-biba-betnis foggun Friday. Mr. Speaker, this is not a budget bill, this is a blueprint. My people of Guam, this is a blueprint for how this Republican majority intends to lead deceptively, dangerously, with double speak. They talk loud and they talk hard because they don't want you to focus on what they're They don't want you to focus on what this bill doesn't do. So they lie to you about what it does. And let me tell you what it doesn't do. It doesn't provide enough money for your tax refunds. The administration was very clear, we are going to run out of money to pay your tax refunds. This bill does nothing for the Guam Memorial Hospital. It appropriates $35 million in imaginary funds. Fake money for the real problems at the Guam Memorial Hospital. In fact, my dear people of Guam, this bill does so little for our people's only public hospital that we are now hearing, we're going to be back in here next week on an emergency session to deal with the problems at GMH because we couldn't do it in here in this session. Because our priority was to take care of the wealthiest corporations on this island. And that means no money for education. A budget that is going to be a disaster for our public schools and our public school They want to talk about the Guam Visitors Bureau and how we're going to bribe the airlines and pay people to come here to our island. Come here to our island so they could see our rundown parks and our dirty bathrooms. Because this budget bill does nothing to fund the maintenance, the beautification of our destination. It offers $11 million in bribes to the airlines. You know who needs help with the airlines? Our people who have to go off-island because we can't fund the Guam Memorial Hospital. Go give them an airline ticket. The jeopardization of critical public services at the expense of an $80 million corporate payoff, those are the priorities. Because my colleagues, I don't think they want to serve our people. It seems like they want to outsmart them, they want to outmaneuver them. And this, my dear people of Guam, this is the outcome of that. That's why I voted no on this budget bill. It jeopardizes tax refunds.
Senator Barnett, hang on one minute, audio, we're working on the audio. I'll go ahead and reserve your time, but let's make sure the audio.
When did it cut off, Mr. Speaker?
We're going to find out, okay? I'll be fair to you, but, okay? So let's take a, let's take a minute, moment's recess. Back in session, continuing on, Senator Barnett, I apologize, we just want to make sure that technical difficulties, you can continue.
Sidhuus Maasi, Mr. Speaker, and just to explain to the people of Guam, if you could pause my time, I'd just like to offer this, the explanation that I was told the speech on the TV had no audio, so I apologize to the people who are watching on the TV, but I was also told by the audiovisual team that the YouTube stream is intact. So it's my hope, my dear people of Guam, I want as many of you to see not just my, my speech, but the speeches and the voices of my colleagues. So I'm hoping that we can take that YouTube stream and put it onto the DOCOMO and GTA channels, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Speaker, I object to proceeding if the TV stream is not live because earlier in our session, the YouTube was going in and out, and you said, "That's okay, because we are relying on our TV stream to comply with open government law."
It's kind of interesting.
So we're going to rely on that. I think we should make sure that it's working before we proceed.
This is a brief extension of remarks, Senator, this is a brief extension of remarks, okay? There's no debatable proportion of this, of this portion, so thank you very much.
Pardon, Mr. Speaker? Are we in a session, Mr. Speaker? The, the open government, point of order, Mr. Speaker, the open government requires that our session be broadcast. That's, that's the law that we passed. So you can laugh all you want and make fun all you want, but that's the law, and if you want to disregard it, I object.
Thank you very much for your objection of a brief extension of remarks.
Mr. Speaker, I don't want to continue until I'm ensured that it's, it's going out over the television, sir.
It is, and it's, it's fine.
With audio, preferably.
You can continue.
I don't know, our, our old folks watching, they're not very good at lip reading.
You can continue, Senator Barnett.
Thank you. Sidhuus Maasi, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker. Echo, I don't know what's going on here, but it seems like a lot of times when we're the ones talking, things get cut off. So, Mr. Speaker, this, it's been called the big beautiful compromise, and I think that's appropriate because... And I think that's appropriate because this bill compromises public education, public health care, our people's tax refunds. They say it's balanced. But we'll see how balanced this budget bill is when our critical public services fall flat on our face and our people are left to foot the bill for $80 million in corporate tax discounts, Mr. Chair. That was the priority. That was the priority for this budget session. It was very clear from day one that this majority, who didn't tell the people of Guam they were going to slip this half percent this year, $40 million, half percent next year, $40 million. Grand total, $80 million. And then they say there's no money for the veterans, there's no money for the PTOs, there's no money for the mayors. Of course, there's no money. Because we gave it all to the biggest of the big businesses, Mr. Speaker. So my dear people of Guam, this is not a budget bill. This is a blueprint. It's a blueprint for how this Republican majority intends to lead by prioritizing the desires of the biggest corporations and not filling the needs of the people of Guam. Sido Smasi, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. Brief extension of remarks. Any other senators wishing to speak, brief extension of remarks. Second round, brief extension of remarks. Anybody? Gentleman from Talavol will show you are recognized, Senator Gumbetelto.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the time to share my thoughts wrapping up this legislative session of the 38th Guam Legislature. In a letter dated December 17, 1901, 32 men from right here in Hangatia sent a petition to the Speaker of the U.S. House of Representatives via then-Governor of Guam Commander Seaton Schroeder to the Secretary of the U.S. Navy that read in part, quote, "The present government was established in August 1899, its legal status being that of a military government of occupation under the authority of a naval officer, the commandant of the naval station established in this island." "The change of sovereignty was welcomed by the inhabitants of Guam and the American government has never been hampered by disaffection or opposition on their part, but on the contrary, they have been loyal, law-abiding, and patient, supporting the government morally and materially as opportunity offered frequently at considerable personal sacrifice." 16 years later, the, quote, "establishment of a permanent government in this island" would come with the establishment of the Guam Congress, which convened on February 3, 1917. They had no legislative powers. They provided more advice than policy. A bill of rights is formulated here in 1930 and Guam holds its first general election on March 7, 1931. War hits our shores 10 years later in 1941. The 8th Guam Congress in 1947 requests U.S. citizenship and an organic act of Guam. The next three years included many events, which was reflected on in recent weeks right here in this building and all across this great island. I presume that the letter I referred to and penned nearly 124 years ago started from discussions across Guam on how we as citizens should seek our collective destinies under the flag of the United States of America. Believe it or not, each legislature here since 1950 in many ways has done its part to take on that particular question head-on. With that, Mr. Speaker, I noted at the start of the budget deliberations that the fiscal year budget is one of our most important mandates. I said then that the organic act of Guam is explicit. Appropriations shall be made by the legislature. Bill number 44-38 was created by this co-equal branch of government of Guam to set the policy of ours and our sister ranches for the next 12 months, collective destinies all. I come away from this experience with this. Grow the economy, not government. While a group of senators continue to advocate for a bigger GovGuam with no expectation for improvements in the delivery of public services, this Republican-led 38th Guam Legislature took a critical step forward to earn back the public's trust in its government by, among other things, setting priorities. Restoring the 4% business privilege tax, prioritizing critical public health, safety, and education services, not just words, a meaningful set of priorities. Together, we must ensure that this policy is executed as we laid out in Bill 44-38. Mr. Speaker, destiny is not a matter of chance, it is a matter of choice. A choice of yea or nay for a FY26 budget has been made. In every opportunity that I've had, Mr. Speaker, with constituents, agency heads, government employees, and my colleagues in this branch, I emphasize each time that everything that we do should not always be about money, it should be about the policy priorities of Guam today. The creation of public policy right here provides all of our citizens with the very means to allow each and every one of us to seek and find our destiny in 2025 and beyond. That letter, Mr. Speaker, on December 17, 1901, was a sign of things to come. The actions by those named on that letter inspired the Guam Congress. It led to action that spurred our first Guam Legislature and the work to have the organic act of Guam signed into federal law. The words remind this 38th Guam Legislature that permanent self-government as part of the American family is our responsibility to protect right here and right now. Future Guam legislatures will be charged with doing the same. They will reflect on the next 75 years and what it all means to the people of Guam. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the time.
Thank you very much, Senator. Brief extension of remarks. Anyone, any other senator? Great senator from Zonia, ma'am, you are recognized, Senator Tullai.
Sido Smasi. A reduction of taxes for businesses, of course, is a great opportunity for businesses to expand, to treat their employees better, to lower prices for consumers, or simply to earn bigger profits. We don't know which will be chosen by the businesses given this tax relief in this budget bill. What we do know is that a reduction of taxes today is certain to reduce government revenues that could otherwise be spent on health, safety, and education for all the people of Guam, including private sector employees and hard-working families in all sectors by a minimum of $80 million, possibly $120 million over the next two years. A 4.5% GRT rate for all businesses grossing from $500,000 to $500 million was touted as a compromise. But in the end, there was no compromise. There were many opportunities to find middle ground through targeted amendments, yet the majority refused to budge. These proposals would have provided more meaningful relief to small businesses while still preserving critical revenue for critical agencies. The fact that these targeted amendments did not pass raises a serious question. Is this tax cut really intended to help struggling small businesses? Because if it were, logic tells us that a larger break for them would have been embraced, but that's not what happened here. In previous legislatures, some businesses were granted complete exemption from the BPT. Other legislatures, including myself in previous terms, reduced the tax rate to 3% for 66% of Guam's businesses, some say 90%, but those who gross less than $500,000. The other 34% of the businesses currently pay 5%. And I proposed during the budget session, a scalpel instead of a chainsaw, that would cut out of that 34%, 1,071 or 21% of businesses on Guam who make between $500 million, I mean $500,000 and $2 million could enjoy a 3% tax rate while keeping 5% for the larger multimillion-dollar businesses. For example, a business making $2 million after exemptions would save $10,000 at 4.5% compared to the 5% rate. But under my amendment to apply a 3% rate to businesses up to $2 million, that same business would have saved $30,000 instead of just $10,000. $10,000 or $30,000 in savings, which provides a better support for $2 million business trying to stay afloat, pay employees, and deal with rising costs. Now let's look at an example from the 33 largest businesses who benefit the most from a 4.5% rate reduction. A rate. A $200 million business saves an additional $1 million just by moving from 5% to 4.5% tax rate. Meanwhile, the majority of businesses get far less relief despite making up most of Guam's economy. And the reduction of the GRT for the largest of our businesses forces the '26 budget to rely on about $49 million in excess revenues just to maintain, not improve, maintain basic services and to subsidize GVB. And we must recognize that these excess funds will likely not be available next year to subsidize GVB or to pay for existing operations or to borrow and build a new hospital or a new prison. GMH testified the '26 budget as presented was not enough for their needs. It was $82.3 million short. And we fought hard and many of us tried to proffer amendments and I was able to get at least $7 million in real cash for GMH by accurately projecting our withholding revenues. I was also able to ensure they're going to get 6.19% of the BPT for the pharmaceutical fund as mandated by law. Yet that fund might decrease this year because of the reduction in BPT. The hospital will also be relying on the hope of another $20 million in FY26 subsrevenues. But the GMH shortfall is still hovering around $55 million. We can and should do better for the people of Guam, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. Brief extension of remarks. General Lady from Haga, Senator Mettanami, ma'am, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We just completed an immensely intense two weeks of session developing our government's next fiscal year budget. I commend my colleagues for their passion and all of the work that went into and continues to go into the process and to Chairman Duainius for his leadership and diligence as the presider of the budget proceedings. Too often, we forget those behind this budget or forget, we forget that behind this budget, behind the numbers and the ABC, 1, 2, 3, III are people, real people who will be affected both positively and negatively over the final project we present as a body. To start, I want us to acknowledge, or I want to acknowledge and recognize the people who do the numbers crunching, the collating, the preparation, who advise on the sidelines and keep all 15 of us policymakers in line and every once in a while in sync. Our clerk of the legislature, our office staff, audiovisual masters, legal counsel, policy analysts, the OFB specialists, the executive director, the CFO, and the whole central staff, Sarge, even you. These are the faceless and nameless amazing people who make this legislature run and who keep this institution functioning as a co-equal branch of government despite not having co-equal financial compensation. Then there are the employees, the people, the human beings who make our departments and agencies operate so that, so they can provide service to our residents. They aren't AI or figureheads, but real people just trying to do their jobs the best they can. During this process and what felt like budget boot camp, the learning curve was enormous. It is painstakingly difficult to create a budget that will please everyone when we have a finite amount of money. So I did the one thing that I've done best all my life, I listened. I listened to the hard-working medical professionals at GMH who expressed to me, often with emotion, how they want so much to treat and heal patients as best they can, but just need the tools to do it. I listened to the experts at Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center speak about those who are mentally challenged, who they try with extreme diligence to help, but they just don't have the funds to do it. I listened to the public health experts who give all their energy to processing families so they can get their supplemental nutrition assistance program funds. I listened to the dedicated people at GOVA who do more with less and have been hamstrung by annual budgets that don't reflect the politicians' cry of we'll do everything we can for our veterans. I listened and then I advocated for them as best I could. The most contentious component of the budget was the BPT. Thousands upon thousands of our island residents will be positively impacted by the reduction of the business privilege tax. Not just those behind the companies, corporations, but their employees and customers who will finally get some relief after seven years of tempered wages and higher prices. Some of our colleagues in here have been vilified or have vilified the owners of the companies who benefit from the BPT rollback. But those colleagues failed to mention that government service is made possible by the tax dollars provided directly and indirectly by the business community. The owners of the corporations have been made out to be the villain in this budget debate. Despite providing employment opportunities, promotions, growth, and products and services to our people, they're somehow supposed to feel guilty for their success, which is a disconcerting message because don't we teach our children to strive and be as successful as they can be? I find great irony in that message, especially since my legislative colleague who led the jeers and the charges against Guam's large corporations was also a colleague of mine for decades, working for a company who provided our island with the service of information and truth. In fact, four members of the 38th Guam Legislature worked for that company, which is part of a conglomeration that includes a nonprofit organization that provides financial assistance for those battling cancer. No matter what side we stood during this session, I believe we, all 15 of us, stood up for what we believe. I thank my colleagues for some very lively debate during this budget session over some extremely important matters. The budget development process is arduous, intense, certainly not glamorous as evidenced by the video footage of all of us at midnight Thursday. But what kept me going are the people. I was reminded of why I ran in the first place. I ran for you, not me. Sido Smasi.
Thank you very much. Brief extension of remarks. Any other senator wishing to speak, brief extension of remarks. Gentleman from Jiggle, Senator Sinagstein, sir, you are recognized.
Good morning, Mr. Speaker. My colleagues and the people of Guam. The last two weeks have been challenging, but we're finally, but we finally reached the end. In passing this bill, we have fulfilled one of our highest responsibilities as lawmakers, a bill that not only outlines the government's financial capacity, but also in some instances determines how it will function in the coming weeks. We began with intense debate and at times, those passionate discussions persisted. Yet through them, we saw the best of ourselves emerge. They serve as a powerful reminder that our people matter and they deserve nothing less than our very best. A significant change in this bill was the half percent reduction in the BBT. It demanded true physical discipline and stirred strong emotion across our community. In those moments, we saw the passion and care that bind us together in service of our people. We were challenged to ensure that the funds were directed where they were most needed and though agencies did not receive all they asked for, the bill we passed gave them the support required to carry on their important work, including continuing appropriation authority and additional funds from excess revenue and all aim at ensuring the government can continue operating, supporting the dedicated employees who serve our community and providing the resources needed to keep vital programs and services available. Mr. Speaker, I voted in favor of this bill to ensure the continued operation of our government. Mr. Speaker, am I still on? Okay. Mr. Speaker, I voted in favor of this bill to ensure the continued operation of our government and to demonstrate to our people that despite political differences, we remain committed to fulfilling our responsibility and moving forward for the good of our island. I am grateful for the unanimous support of my amendment to restore $10 million in the rainy day fund. This fund is vital safeguard, ensuring our government is prepared for the disaster we know can impact our lives. know can impact our lives. By protecting Guam's credit rating and strengthening this reserve, we are working together to make sure that when the rainy days come, they do not overwhelm our daily lives. And I'd like to thank my colleagues for the unanimous support we passed by amendment to dedicate the first twenty million dollars from fiscal year 2026 on obligated general fund revenues to GMH's. This is our commitment to ensuring the hospital has the medicine, supplies and maintenance it needs to provide safe, quality healthcare for our people. Together, we made progress moving forward for the construction of Simon Sanchez School by securing the sixteen-point-thirty, sixteen million dollars needed through my amendment. Thank you all. The sharks have waited for too long for a new home. Together, we can finally make it a reality. And thank you all for supporting the amendment to help the mayor's council fund their community maintenance workers. This amendment gives mayors the flexibility they need to support the hard-working frontline employees who serve their villages. And fiscal tightening requires us to carefully assess both potential revenues and possible losses. And I'd like to thank the OFB for their diligence in providing the numbers, analyzing outcomes and establishing the ceilings and lapses that shape this bill. This careful work is crucial and the result of a bill that will serve our island community. And I think to thank the Madam Clerk and her team for staying ahead of every detail. Your quick work helped us through today, as it does every day in the legislature. I'd like to thank the Siren Arms and your team and the protocol team. Your role in maintaining order and security is essential to our branch and I'm proud of the work we do together. No matter our debates or differences, we stand united in one purpose: to serve, to uplift and to move our island forward. Sidoos Masri, Mr. Speaker, and God bless Guam. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Senator. Brief extension of remarks. General Lady from Tumuning, Senator Tidry, ma'am, you are recognized.
Sidoos Masri, Mr. Speaker. First, I want to thank all those individuals who stuck with us and watched while we deliberated during this budget. It's so important to be informed and those who are not able to, at least now you can be stewards toward answering questions to our community when they weren't able to hear the budget and what really happened on the session floor and what really goes on in this body. You know, one of the main reasons why, Mr. Chair, I supported this bill is because it preserved the five percent of business privilege tax on large military contracts. With billions of federal dollars flowing into Guam through the buildup, it is only fair that our island benefits too. This revenue is already built in the federal contract costs and it doesn't burden our local contractors. By protecting this revenue, we help sustain education, healthcare, public safety programs already strained by federal funding reductions. This budget bill also included more funding for the Guam Cancer Trust Fund, supporting cancer screening treatments, outreach and direct care. We also strengthened the Office of Medical Examiners by ensuring autopsy, supporting investigations and providing closure for families. Another positive step was a step that you've seen me, Mr. Speaker, from day one since I came into the thirty-fifth Guam Legislature advocating for the rainy day fund, rebuilding our reserves, strengthening our ability to respond to future crises and unexpected challenges, which, my dear colleagues, the true fight was not in this budget bill. The true fight will be after this budget bill. Things have considerably changed in our economy, people moving off island, the reduction of the compact impact, the reduction and federal funds being cut. The true test will happen in time moving forward and we have to be prepared for that. The rainy day fund is an area that we have saved, thank goodness we've been saving for, because we are going to need it. Mr. Chair, before, Mr. Speaker, before I close, I must speak to how we have conducted ourselves throughout these deliberations. I just felt there were times there was unfairness. There were times where interruptions were being done without the process of due course, the protocols of asking the chair a point of information and waiting until the chair recognizes you. A point of personal privilege, asking for that and waiting for the chair to recognize you so that you can speak. It was heated, it was frustrated, thick of the night. We were all tired. I'm sure those who were watching were tired. But the real challenge, my dear colleagues, is what happens next in our future and we have to think about it. That's why I know for sure things are not going to be easy as it has been when federal funds were raining on us and we had this exorbitant excess revenue everyone was talking about. It did not come from anything but federal funds. That's why we need to speak about another bill that I'm hoping everybody will be on board with. And my plan is to introduce legislation that would, if this bill should pass, amend the ten million dollars to make all military contracts regardless of a cap, to continue with the five percent. That will be a bill that I will be introducing. So I hope, my colleagues, think of what I said about the future and the real fight is going to happen there to protect our people, to bring the safety that's needed on this island, to bring our, our infrastructure up to par. I want to especially thank my staff who's also stayed up with me throughout these ten days, day and night, Saturday and Sunday. Rowena, Dylan, Charissa, Issa and Alana, thank you so much. And most especially thank you to the staff here at the legislature for all that you did and the sacrifice that you made in sharing your sandwich with me at dinnertime. Thank you, Sidoos Masri, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On brief extension of remarks, are there any other senators wishing to speak? General Lady from Baragana, ma'am, Senator Cabo, you are recognized.
Sidoos Masri, Mr. Speaker, and to my colleagues, half a day buenas, and to the people of Guam, hello. As we conclude this budget session, I rise with deep appreciation, not only for your support of the amendments I introduced, but for the thoughtful and principled deliberation that shaped this process. These amendments do more than shift figures across the spreadsheets. They reflect our shared values. They affirm that governance at its best is not merely transactional, it's, it is transformational. Now I want to acknowledge something plainly. There is no perfect budget. No single document can meet every need to resolve every tension, but I recognize that this is a good compromise. It reflects a sincere effort to balance fiscal responsibility with moral clarity. It affirms that our agencies are not silos. They are partners in building a Guam that is safe, rooted and forward-looking. This budget, this budget is not without constraints, but it is shaped with care. It reflects a legislature that listened, questioned and ultimately chose to protect the missions that mattered most. I rise today with gratitude for the support of the amendments I introduced and for the collective resolve that guided this session and I thank all who work hard to deliver. Beyond these amendments, this budget reflects a broader commitment to Guam's well-being. The major appropriations in this budget bill speak to the heart of our island's infrastructure, public health and economic stability. These appropriations are commitments. They reflect a government that sees the full landscape of need and responds with clarity and care. In recent weeks, we witnessed proposals that sought to rifle through essential agencies under the guise of reform. That approach did not reflect progress. It reflected a retreat from the values that bind us. It treated cultural preservation, youth support and language revitalization. It threatened as expendable. But today, this body chose a different path. Youth chose deliberation over disruption, integrity over impulse, sense over spectacle. To those who asked the hard questions, who sought clarity and who ultimately chose to protect these missions, your leadership speaks volumes. You demonstrated that fiscal stewardship must be paired with more, with moral clarity, that accountability must never come at the cost of erasure and that governance is strongest when anchored in principle, not provocation. To our staff, my team, my office, our legislature staff, analysts and public servants, thank you. Your diligence, your long hours, your quiet resolve made this session possible. You are the steady hands behind every page, every analysis, every moment of clarity. Your work is often unseen, but it is deeply felt and it is deeply appreciated. To our community partners, advocates and agency heads, thank you for showing up, for testifying, for submitting data, for sharing stories, for reminding us that behind every appropriation is a mission and behind every mission is a community that depends on us to get everything right. And to the people of Guam, this budget reflects your voices. It reflects a government that listens, that learns and that leads with a heart and sense. It affirms that compassion and accountability are not opposing forces. They are partners in responsible governance. It affirms that our island's future will not be shaped by austerity alone, but by empathy, care and commitment. Undang kaluna sidoos masri to all of you, let us carry this momentum forward with unity, with purpose and with the courage to defend what matters most. Let us continue to build a government that meets complexity with care and that never loses sight of the people that it serves. Let us remember that every budget is a moral document and that every line we protect, every agency we uplift, every amendment that we pass is a reflection of who we are and who we aspire to be. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. On brief extension of remarks, are there any other senators willing to speak on brief extension of remarks? On brief extension, General Lady from Baragana, Senator Parrish, ma'am, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So I just want to make it very clear to the, the audience out there that when we come into this budget session, I would say about ninety-five percent of the budget is already created and so we're left fighting over that last five percent. And what was slipped in this budget bill was, had a huge impact. We're talking eighty million dollars, a loss of eighty million dollars upfront. And to me, you know, we are at a crossroads right now. The federal government has shifted from doling out hundreds of millions of dollars now to defunding agencies in, in, in part or in whole. And we don't know the true impact of that, but this body, sorry, through this, the passage of this budget bill, did not hear logic, did not hear information and base it on true, true information that we're going to be losing federal funds. And in the face of that, we passed, or this body passed a budget that will eliminate a hundred, eighty million dollars more. And so that is not going to help us close the gap. And so like my, my colleague had said, we don't know, we're, we're going to have to, the true fight comes later. How are we going to continue to provide services? These are services that many of our community depends upon. Education. We want educated workers. We want workers that can be retold for different careers. Right now, we know that our biggest driver is still, needs recovery. And even at that, we did not create policy through this budget to ensure that our money is spent well. We need to put more into destination management. This is the feedback that has been given by the visitors. We are again misdirecting very vital public funds and looking, we're just misdirecting it and looking the other way where we could be putting it and where it truly helps. One of the things that came out of the conference was homelessness. This budget bill does not address that and has sweeping effects for recovery of our island. In addition to helping our community, there is so much disconnect that this budget bill has. You know, I go to my office every day, I see people who are homeless sitting outside. What has this budget bill done to help them? We see a hospital in shambles. Of course, we argued over, you know, the phantom money. The money that was appropriate, it was for operations, not for CIP. That money is not going to help the CIP, help that, help the hospital. And here we are holding DOE's hands for the, the lower budget than they need, saying you do this with less money? It doesn't make sense to me. They, we are micromanaging them when they are there every day managing the operations. We are not there. We should give them that ability to decide what is most important, keeping the water running or something else. We are not there every day to see what we're doing, the impact of what this budget bill does. We're not there to help them. It's just tying their hands. The other thing that's problematic was the increase in thresholds for small purchases. And to me, this is problematic because if we want our government to spend properly, we don't release the floodgates. This is just three quotes, three positive quotes. It could be your three best friends, right? You leave out the other, other vendors and automatically quarter of a million's in your pocket. We spent a quarter of a million when we could have been going through the IFB process where we're going to get the best value for the money that taxpayers are providing, taxpayers from businesses and civil services, civil servants alike. That is irresponsible, irresponsibility, and I'm questioning the reason behind it. And if I can add, decorum was not held and I, this was a low point. In the thirty-eighth Guam Legislature, it was a low point when it comes to decorum where a member was, tried to be silenced. This is not the values of our people and especially when there was merit, merit to what's being questioned. We want to be the model for our society, that everybody can be treated fairly, no matter who you are. And I, thank you. I know my time's up.
That's okay. Thank you very much, Senator. Brief extension of remarks. Mr. Vice Speaker, Senator Rada, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and to the people of Guam and to my colleagues here. The budget bill. This budget bill that was presented, debated on and passed by this body is a budget bill that our government must live within its means. We went over many days going over what amendments we want to put in, voted on the amendments up and down. The biggest contention was the BPT. Even one of our colleagues in this body asked, who in here has businesses that's going to benefit from this BPT rollback? And I said it, perhaps my business may benefit from the rollback, but my business also paid the five percent when this government said to pay. It's a given take. It's about working with our private sector because GovGuam does not print money. Our private sector is what keeps our government and our island afloat. We've heard that throughout this budget that agencies were not funded, they're not fully funded, what are they going to do? The hospital's in shambles. For the past several years, we had For the past several years, we had billions, billions of federal funds that came through this island. This, we had billions in the local budget as well. What have they done in the past several years? Perhaps had they taken care of ensuring that vendor payments were paid, ensuring that our obligations were taken care of, those excess revenues could have gone to the agencies to help support them. But absolutely not. It did not. What did they do? They kicked the can down the road to this body. The same individuals who were in place with OFB said, "We need to be conservative. We need to look. We need to see how we can make things work." And that's exactly what we did. The difference between the executive budget and our budget, $7 million. Seven million out of a $1.3 billion budget. So the question goes back. What have they taken care of? What bills did they pay? We had 11 votes on this budget bill. And thank you to the 11 who supported this bill. Because it goes to show that you just didn't put an amendment in. You put in an amendment, got supported, and you supported the bill because you support the agencies and the government overall. Those who voted no, that's a half-half. Well, we throw in the amendment, but we're going to vote no on the budget bill. So in actuality, you did not support your agencies or your departments that you say you supported. We did. Because the end budget, you did not support. And you watch as the, as time goes on. If we're lucky enough to see additional revenues come in, who will be the first individuals to proffer bills to obligate those funds? And I have no doubt it will probably be those who voted no. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to thank all of our hardworking employees in the government of Guam. Most especially those here in the legislative branch, my office staff, OFB, and Central. You guys are fabulous. We wouldn't have been able to do it without you. And I appreciate all the work that you have done. To AV, I apologize for my colleague's remark about questioning your integrity, about being cut off. And perhaps had my colleague, who had oversight of Central, upgraded equipment when they had the time and the opportunity to, things would not have happened. But let me tell you, these are the things that happen because some things are just beyond our control. With that, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to thank everyone, and thank you as well.
Thank you very much, sir. On brief extension of remarks, gentlemen from Timoting, Senator Lohan, you're recognized.
Thank you and good morning, Mr. Speaker, and, or good afternoon, Mr. Speaker. We're afternoon already. Good afternoon, colleagues, and a good afternoon to the people of Guam who may be following along with us. After long days and nights of debate, what we have before us is more than just a budget bill, Mr. Speaker. It is a promise fulfilled, a promise that we, as a body made to the people of Guam. We promise relief. And with this budget, we lower taxes, putting more money in the pockets of families and the small businesses that needed the most. We promise to invest in our economy. This budget protects the number-one industry, tourism, the lifeline of many jobs. By making this investment, we are ensuring that thousands of our people remain employed, our businesses remain open, and our visitors continue to see Guam as the premier destination in the Pacific. We promise accountability and modernization. That is why this budget provides Customs and Quarantine Agency the resources they need to do their jobs by modernizing operations so they can collect taxes properly and protecting our borders, by training new cycle officers and supporting our dedicated K-9 units who are out there each and every day stopping drugs from entering our island. This budget delivers on commitments, Mr. Speaker. Colleagues, this is a good budget. It is a balanced budget. It is a responsible budget. It reflects the values of our island. I want to thank each and every one of my colleagues, of course, for the passion and the thoughtfulness you brought to this process. I especially want to thank Chairman Senator Chris Duñez for his steady leadership and the hardworking team of the Office of Finance and Budget led by Director Steve Guerrero, whose tireless effort behind the scenes helped us get to where we are at this afternoon. I also want to take a moment to thank the legislative staff who worked tirelessly during this process, our clerk led by Ms. Renee Mano, our Sergeant Arms, Epa Kaigui, and esteem, the support staff of this body, my own staff, office staff, and all the stakeholders who gave their time and input to make sure that we crafted a budget that works for our people, Mr. Speaker. And finally, on a personal note, Mr. Speaker, I want to wish an early birthday to a ranking member, Senator Dina Rose Munia Barnes. Your wisdom and service and your deep love for the island continues to inspire each and every one of us. Happy birthday to you. Mr. Speaker, I'm proud to stand here today and say this budget is a win for the people of Guam. It keeps our promise, it protects our future, and it shows that we can achieve, what we can achieve when we work together. With that, again, Mr. Speaker, Sidoos Masih, thank you very much. God bless each and every one of us. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. I think that just about exhausted everybody who wanted a brief extension of remarks. So with that, are there any announcements? Again, also, early birthday. Happy birthday, sis, ranking member. I also want to thank the legislative staff as well. Clerks, legal consuls, Sergeant-at-Arms, AV staff, Central staff, and all of your staff members. I had an opportunity to be able to speak with all of them, and thank you very much for keeping, keeping things afloat. With that, Senator Lohan, you are recognized.
Thank you and good afternoon again, Mr. Speaker. Business Speaker, I move to adjourn this session subject to the call of the speaker.
On the motion to adjourn, this is subject to the call of the speaker without objection. So ordered. Thank you very much.